Go there, it's not gonna, yeah.
Okay, good.
The Citizens Advisory Committee suggested that we maybe overhaul or replace the amphitheater where the bands perform because it's ill-equipped and it's really not in good shape. Have we put that into the budget in any way?
We had submitted a grant through Community Parks and Playground that we were denied.
Okay.
So staff is working up a, some numbers on some things we can do in-house. The complete overhaul of the amphitheater was about 125?
Yeah.
Wow.
Or is it more than that?
Over 200,000.
Okay.
Wow.
So a complete overhaul was, it was over 200,000. We did submit a grant for 50,000 to Community Parks and Playground, which they denied. So we're gonna try to do in-house. I have staff working up some proposals and numbers to see what we can do, at least at our level, to make it a little bit better.
We, just, yeah, we knocked it out of the park last year with, Kenny, the pool.
Yes, we did.
And also the inclusive playground equipment. And I, we're probably gonna have to stand down this year with our requests. I mean, the other fellow, they were, the other municipalities were very, very supportive of our effort there this year, but I, you know, we gotta stand down.
Yeah.
I think there's a couple of just really minor changes that could occur in there, and I'm sure that Jenny Joy would be happy to, because she uses the pavilion.
Right.
But the concert.
Yeah, well, I mean, if she's got some suggestions, if you'll have her email me and I can work on staff.
Something that's doable here.
Right, correct.
She's done a great job.
Even, even if some modifications and improvements to the, the band shell occur in the future, if we pursue a grant, is there a timeframe where like we can't, we have to wait awhile if we were denied? You know, do we have to, is there, is there a time limit before we can pursue another one?
Well, unfortunately, the two grants that we normally go through for anything park-related is your program, Open Space, and that was due May 3rd.
Okay.
Last year, we submitted for the Community Parks and Playground for the bandstand. Those come open August, in August. So there's that overlap. So we didn't know we were not gonna get the bandstand, so we didn't submit it with Program Open Space. We can always resubmit next year. It seems that community pla, Community Parks and Playground, their money has been tight the past couple of years. Last year, we got denied for everything that we asked for, and it prob, it could be coming on the heels of the pool.
Okay.
But we keep our eyes open. Maddie is real good at finding grants and reaching out to some other organizations that we normally haven't used in the past to try to get funding.
Okay.
So I will, yeah, if she wants to send me some suggestions on it, and I'll work with staff, see what we can do.
Okay.
Other questions in Department 60?
Get there.
No? Moving on to page 16, Departments 70 and 75.
Page 16 has the, the debt service that we have in the general fund, which is almost identical to last year's amount. Those are just a couple loans that the town has, and I take the schedules and see what amount is going to principal and what, what is going to interest. So those should tie out exactly. And then Department 75, the interfund transfer, which is the residual amount of the revenues minus all your departments. The interfund transfer amount is 248,171. Under that amount is listed the different line items within Fund 2 that we propose designate, designating in the Capital Projects Fund. If you turn to page 18 and 19, there lists all the line items that we currently have in our capital projects fund. You have the current balance, you have the proposed budget for fiscal year 20, and then the final column, you have the balance after the budget is added to it. And you have all your various line items, and Kathy can go through and, and each of the line items and give you an idea of what's...
That's, it wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. I can kinda go over...
It's an offset.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so it's, it's not listed on here.
Okay, okay. Some of the proposed projects for fiscal year 2020 that are related to the capital funds transfers or the capital projects. For Department 10, looking to transfer 6,300 to 999 General, and that's gonna be a new projector for the meeting room, as you guys have been in many meetings here. This thing is very old, outdated, and keeps overheating, so we'd like to replace that.
It's about time.
Yes, yes. Related to Department 12, planning and zoning, line item 400 is your stormwater management. We are requesting 37,000 to be moved to that line item, which will link, for 5,000 of that is for the yearly inspections, 7,000 for storm drain repair, and 25,000 towards the state mandated stormwater projects that have to be completed in the next three years. So we want to slowly add to that amount. In that transfer, there's gonna be an interfund transfer from Department 30, line item 615, storm drain inlets. We're gonna close out that line item. It had 18,805 dollars in it. We want to move it to Department 12, stormwater management, and have the stream, the storm drain repairs included. If this transfer is approved, that would make the line item for stormwater management 112,267. Department 12, General 999, it's a 3,000, we'd like to move 3,000. The town planner is working on a grant for a mural and art project on Main Street, possibly one of the buildings up there that might agree to have, as you see, anybody's been in downtown Frederick, the beautiful mur, murals that are on buildings. We'd like to bring one of them to town.
Like the back of the Jubilee or something like that?
Um, a couple locations that he's been talking to. Really don't wanna say until we get the okay. No pressure, right? For Department 15, line item 108, 140 South Seaton, like to move 22,000 dollars there. We need to update the garage heating and cooling. Currently, there is none. It's not operational. It's about 10,000. And for the 140 South Seaton House, we'd like to budget about 12,000 to install a new bathroom on the first floor. It makes it much more marketable. Those are the comments we're hearing from anybody that's come to see the, the property, whether we, we rent it or sell it. 22 East Main Street, like to move 3,500 there because the concrete floor needs to, in the garage, needs to be repaired, replaced. It's cracking.
Do we have a slide for this that you're...
That has the actual numbers. I don't think I have a, right there. You want that one?
That, that's helpful.
Okay. It also, on page 18, under your second column, FY '20, proposed budget, those are the transfers that I'm talking about, the numbers that are kind of in bold.
Yeah.
Those are the numbers that I'm talking about transferring.
Sure, I'm just trying to follow because you're listing the different addresses and I'm...
Sorry. If I'm, if, yeah, just ask me if, you know, let me know if you want me to repeat or go back to the line item. I lost my train of thought. Okay. Under Department 30, for line item 340 is your vehicles. Normally, we transfer 55,000 each year to maintain our vehicle fund. This year, I'd like to transfer 60,291 because of the large dump truck that unfortunately needed to be replaced two year, or about a year and a half sooner. It was supposed to be in fiscal year 2021, and we thank you for approving the replacement of the town car. And unfortunately, the mini dump was slated to be replaced in fiscal year 2020. We have not received any estimates for that. We'll bring that back later this, this year. So with that approved transfer, that will bring us up to 331,303. Unfortunately, with everything that's budgeted, it'll knock it right back down once the purchases are made. Line item, under Department 30, your curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and roads, that's for maintaining all your sidewalks, your roads, your pavings in town. Each year, we budget 65,000, bring our total 202,000. Unfortunately, I don't have it with me. Mr. Click provided me a list of all the targeted areas he wants to complete in this upcoming fiscal year, roads and sidewalks. We move down to Department 30, 999. We have 14,600 being transferred. 10,000 of that is the MHA, MHAA Wayside Grant Match for the second round of Wayside Exhibit Signs on East and West Main Street, as well as 4,600 for tree removal along St. Joseph's Lane. There are trees that have become hazardous and are overhanging the road that are on town property that need to be removed. On page 19, $1,000 in line item, Department 60, 120, that's Community Garden. We have applied for a grant to update the community garden, put in an ice picket fence, update the beds, make them deeper, replace it with some wood, rain barrels. So our match, if we do receive the grant, would be about $1,000. For the pool, we've asked to transfer 15,000 towards the pool house. 25,000 of that will be for a grant match for the pool rehab, pool house rehab, excuse me, that we're hoping to begin in the fall. We received a grant from Program Open Space for that. And a match, or 11,250 to put in chairs, tables, and umbrellas. Right now, there is limited seating just under the pavilion. As I mentioned earlier, Ms. Shaw is becoming very innovative in her grant. She found a grant through AARP that she submitted to help pay for a portion of the chairs and tables to put around the pool. So hopefully, we will get that. I believe we received notice in August?
July.
July.
Good job, Ms. Shaw.
2,000, under Department 60, ball fields. This is a match we submitted through POS for a new, new bleachers. I believe it is the field in Memorial Park. They are cracking and falling apart. They are hazardous. Some of this, jumping back to the ball fields earlier, also legit, our insurance company pointed out some of our dugout roofs are in need of repair. They're, they're cracking and splintering. Oh, Department 60, line item 352, your parks, wrecks, and equipment upgrades. Ask for a $3,000 ma, uh, transfer. It would bring our capital fund amount to 72,095. Right now, because we did not get the 50,000 Community Parks and Playground grant, we need about a 71,845 dollar match for the all-inclusive playground. We are doing a, we are piggybacking a cooperative contract, which will get us a discount on the project and equipment. We just met the mayor, myself, and Ms. Shaw just met with the Civitan Club, and they're gonna submit a grant for us as well.
Okay, good.
If all goes well, we'll be able to break ground, was it September, October, Mr. Mayor?
Right.
Something like that.
And just quickly, that's gonna be cited in Community Park or Memorial Park?
Correct. It's gonna be cited in Community Park where the existing playground is. And it's all gonna be, become one playground, so it's gonna be all-inclusive. So everybody can come and enjoy it.
Okay.
We're leaving the, the equipment that's there.
Some of the equipment will remain. Some may or may not. We're looking, we'll get the design here soon. Civitan Club was very instrumental in sitting down with the contractor to come up with the design that would be work for all, to make it all-inclusive, and be able to, to target people with autism, with sensory, handicapped, anybody that would be able to enjoy this playground. We're gonna make sure we have everything in there.
Question on that. Do, do we, does that go out to bid, or we already have something?
Because it was a cooperative bid, we were able to piggyback another contract. And it is, it's not a sole source, but the, that's very limited, companies that do these kind of projects. But because we were able to do a cooperative bid and get the discounted rate, per the code, we didn't have to put it out to bid.
Is it the existing company that we use for our other playgrounds?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So it's a local company?
Yes.
Awesome.
Perfect.
Yes. It's a cooperative bid through, I believe it's Houston, and they target municipalities that are trying to do these types of playgrounds. And so if you sign that contract, you get a discount, and then there's other advantages to going along with them, too. It's something that I know the mayor's passionate about. I'm really excited about it. I think it's gonna be a great opportunity for the town. So that'll bring that match up to where we need it to be. Line item, I can't even read it, 870 is $8,000. Part, one of the grants we submitted in this recent round of POS was to pave the gravel area of Community Park. Most Community Park is paved, with the exception of two parking areas. It's very difficult for anybody that is, has any sort of disability, or anybody that's pushing a stroller in that gravel, it's very difficult.
Yeah, perfectly.
Um... Trail maintenance, line item 900, and ask a transfer of 2,000 to bring that total up to 3,800. Town staff would like to designate 1,600 of that to install a multi-user trail message center board up at Rainbow Lake. And then the final transfer of 999 is 5,480. 5,000 of that will be to complete the board fence throughout Community Park and the farmer's market.
Okay.
Questions, board?
Questions?
A quick question, and this is something that I didn't see before, and believe it or not, it's not a trail question. Shocker, I know. Is there any funding designated, I did not see it, related to the county field behind us to rehabilitate it? I, I heard the complaint from the, the Thurmond Athletic Group was, it's a little uneven. And I know there's been discussion about that, but is there any simple spending we could do to roll the field? I mean, I know we went to, we had improved drainage when we aerated it and overseeded it. I think we had some success there, but anything there yet?
No. As you know, we submitted for a grant to make it a multi-use field. We were denied that. It was, it's a very expensive process, and it wasn't even for turf field. So no, staff hasn't really given, that's the first that anybody has brought a complaint. I know it's not an ideal field. So it's something that possibly we can look towards in the future, if there's future grants available, or if there is funding left over. But I don't know what the process would be. I don't even know how you make it.
Sure.
Good. But it's something that we can definitely look into.
I mean, I'm not necessarily looking for astroturf back there, you know, but, you know, that would be a whole staff position on that one. But the, they do generate money, which is ironic. But more to the point, a natural turf field, if we could upgrade it or make plans to upgrade it, I think there's value to that.
What was the estimate?
And I think that would also bring, you know, more visits to town, and it would, it would provide, a rectangular athletic field. So, you know, soccer, football, field hockey, and so on and so on.
That's actually what we had gotten an estimate for, Maddie. It wasn't for an astro field, it was for a natural turf field. And it was upwards of, what, $75,000 to do? So...
But I think that's a valuable investment. I mean, in time, I'd like us to move in that direction, I think. You know, because the other point is, you know, as the mayor points out, we see some of our institutions moving beyond us, like the Little League, and you know, that goes in cycles, the ebb and flow. But I know that Mr. Taylor would love to bring his practices behind the building from Fairfield, and pay a slight fee to bring his troops down here and have his line drills out there.
We actually never got, received the final okay from the school board to proceed with that, which was, we kinda let it go because we didn't get the funding for it.
Sure, sure.
So it's definitely something, I agree, that we'd like to see some other sports come up, and it's something that we can, and plan for in the future.
Powerful girls, powerful boys, a lot of sports. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Trails, yeah, trails. I'm good.
Any other questions on capital projects? Are you good? All right. Moving on to the business fund budget?
We're gonna go, go ahead and move on to the water fund.
Oh, water fund, okay.
The enterprise funds, the water, both the water and sewer. Page 22 has the summary for both the Department 40 and Department 50, the water and sewer. On that page, you can see that the revenues for water are down slightly, and the expenses are also down slightly. So kind of parallel there. In the sewer department, the revenues are just about the same as they were the prior year, budgeted, and the expenses are up by about 1% at a little, roughly 10,000 more. As we look at the water expenses, the, and that's reflected in these slides, you can see the water expenses are down slightly from the prior, from the prior budget year. Within the, on page 24 and 25, it lists the revenues and the expenses. And we have a couple slides that we want to show that, that highlight some of the line items for the water department. The first is contractual. We won't, the total for contractual will be 35,150. As you can see from the, you know, from the, the slide, there's different areas that we, that we contract out for the water department.
Sure. 7,000 of that is for your lab. 8,000 is for the leak detection. He'll come twice a year, listen to the lines and help pinpoint any leaks that we might have. 10,750 is for the algae control. 2,850 is to mow the bank at Rainbow Lake. Tree removal at the dam is 2,100. Then you have a $2,500 base, and their allocation for human resources because of the number of employees they have is 1,950.
Moving on to operating supplies, the total there is 60,300.
And just some of the items that make that up, because it has increased from pre, from fiscal year 19. 500 of that is allocated for equipment. 3,000 is for your lines and piping. 9,000 is for the water plant itself. That includes $7,000 for two turbidometers. 3,000 goes with the labs, oh, to the lab, excuse me. 12,500 for Mount St. Mary's water. 5,500 for tools. 25,000 to continue to replace 100 of the old meters, which we're almost done updating. I think this may be the last year that I think we'll get all the old meters replaced with new ones now. 1,500 for General, and then $300 for them to purchase some new charts and pens to track the flows.
Chemicals is another area that is looked at closely. The 27, the 29,700 is the same budget amount as the prior year, so that, that's holding steady, thankfully. You can see the, the different chemicals that the town purchases and budgeted for, the chlorine, the soda ash, the del pack, coagulant, and general amounts. So that is the same as last year. And you see the chemical costs also, over the, the last three years, very steady in the amounts that's been budgeted by town staff.
I know this was a question that was asked by the board, I believe, at the last meeting, and we just kinda wanted to touch on it real quick. One of the areas that we see the, the biggest savings due to the LG Sonic, the algae control system at Rainbow Lake, is reduction in the chemical costs. As you can see, it dropped dramatically after the installation in April of 2017, that we dropped down to the 29,700. Prior to that, in audited 2016, the actual cost for chemicals was 37,125. So we've seen about eight, nine thousand, about an $8,000 reduction in chemical costs since the installation.
Perfect, terrific. We need to have a contest to name that, just like Mr. Trashwheel, you know?
Okay. Another big area, large area that we are seeing, the reduction in waters, is in the back, yearly average backwashes. The amount of water that it takes to clean the water that's coming in from your lakes and wells is essentially what backwash is. So in 2016, we were averaging about 1,284,000 gallons daily that the water plant was pushing through. In 2017, it dropped down to just over a million. In 2018, it dropped down to 872,000. And currently, for 2019, unfortunately, we only have the first four months. We're on a very good trend to even continue our reduction, water. On average, we're saving about 35.8% average reduction of water used. And that's, it's attributed to a lot of things, but the biggest component will be your LG Sonic. And just a quick, something that you can visualize and understand, the gallons used per day is less. Our water savings, as mentioned prior to installation, it was 1,284,000 gallons a month. Currently, we, in the end of 2018, we had an average of 872,000 gallons. If you divide that out, it's a savings of about 13,508 gallons per day, which is the equivalent to, basically, we've saved 54 taps based off the state requirement.
One of, another slide we'd like to emphasize is for repairs and maintenance in the Department 40 Water. The total there is 58,950, slightly higher than last year's 57,500. And you get a, a visual presentation of what makes up the repairs and maintenance. The bulk of it is the 28,000 that is, I guess it's...
That's the water plant itself.
The water plant itself, so. And you can see the detail listed on the slide there. This gives you a, an analysis of the revenues and expenses from fiscal year 2010 to current. As you can see, the last couple of years, we've been basically, revenues have almost matched expenses, so it gives you an idea where we're at as far as the bottom line. Fiscal year 20, the, the amount of net fund income is at a negative 28,100, so.
These are some water, future infrastructure projects that staff has brought to my attention that we would like to accomplish in fiscal year 2020. These item, line items here, because it is in your enterprise, enterprise or your business fund, they're considered cash items, so they're not paid for out of the budget. It's paid out of the cash that you have on hand in the water fund. We'll complete the final phase of the riprap at the lake. It was done in three phases. This will be the final phase. The track road water line is in desperate need of repair to tie the 10-inch water line in the Mount St. Mary's water line. That's about 15,000. We have to repair, replace the culverts at the backwash pond, and the water plant is in need of a new furnace. I think that's all we have for water.
Yeah. Are there any questions?
I do believe Commissioner Wirth has a question.
I had a question regarding the past slide, the infrastructure. Where are we potentially with the replacement of the water line from about North Avenue to North Gate on North Seaton Avenue?
That I don't have in front of me, but the estimate that we had for that project, I believe, and I'm, we'll probably have to get back to you on that one.
Okay.
I can email you that fund. But that one, there's two water lines that are in need of repair. One is on Waynesboro Pike, and one is also on North Seaton. And I'm gonna get them flip-flopped. One is 780,000, and the other is 384,000. I just don't know which is which off the top of my head to repair. Obviously, those will take loan or grant funding to accomplish. So they are on our radar. It's just a matter of when we receive funding to do it.
Are we pursuing funding now?
We have not pursued any funding at this time for either of those projects. We were trying to knock out some of the smaller ones.
Sure.
Get the pump station up and, project up and going. And the wells, the mountain water line that we were working on, we're almost finished. The well installation is supposed to happen either this week or next week.
Okay.
And then we can finish that water line. We're trying to do it in order of priorities, and those two were priority items. But it is on their radar. They are aware of the need to do it. It's just the logistics of getting it done.
And then when we pursue the funding, it takes, there's a little bit of time there, so...
Right. It depends where, if it's gonna have to be a loan, if there's funding through MDE. Right, it depends where, if it's going to have to be a loan, if there's funding through MDE. Like I said, we want to finish the funding process on the pump station. And then we can look towards those other projects to do. But they are on our radar. We do know that they need to be done.
Approximately five years, something like that. I know I can't, you can't, I can't hold you to it.
Right, I hope it's less than five years. But I know on, on Dan and Jimmy's schedule, it is something that I think they want to get done in the next five years.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions about it, just email me and I'll give you more details if I have them.
Okay.
Commissioner Buckland, did you have something?
Checking on the track road water line, that's separate from the Waynesboro Pike water line?
Yes.
So obviously, the funding is a lot less. Is that, I'm assuming it's serving Pembroke Woods. Does it also serve private homes that are outside of town, similar to what we used to have up Annandale Road and Mountain View Road?
I, off the top of my head, I do not know how many houses are on the track line road. On the track road water line. There may be a handful, but I do not believe there are that many. It is a constant, that water line is a constant problem.
The new furnace at the wastewater treatment plant, is that, am I reading WTP? Oh, the water, oh, okay, so up on the mountain versus the new facility across 15, okay.
Correct.
That's, I'm glad to hear that it's up versus new, so terrific. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other line items in, under the water fund that you wanted to talk about?
I, I think I'm good. Nick Abreu is all right.
Moving on to the sewer fund, these next couple of slides are, which I'll show you. Next couple of slides, the spikes in both of the, the line, on, on the lines are, both have to do with opening of the new wastewater treatment plant during those years. Sewer revenue, you can see, last two or three years has been pretty consistent, a little bit over a million dollars. So that number seems to be where we're at as far as the usage and what our rates are. Sewer expenses, similar from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20. Similar expense amounts. Last year was, total expenses were budgeted at 725,000. This year is about a little over 735,000. Some of the line items we want to point out is first contractual, which last year was actually higher at 79,000. This year it's at 60,300 and.
Yeah, so what makes up that line item is 1,200 of it's for the pump station, 1,500 for the sludge testing, 15,000 for sludge removal, 30,000 for the lab, and then you have 12,600 in general. And 6,150 of that is tree removal along the fence line at the sewer, at the wastewater treatment plant. 4,500 of that is, is your base, makes up your contractual.
Under operating supplies, that total actually increased from the prior year up to, to 23,000.
There's some, there were some necessary items at the plant that needed to be purchased. You have 300 for equipment, 15,000 at the plant, 3,200 of that are for new surge protectors, suppressors, excuse me. 9,720 are for new UV bulbs, 1,000 for a biolax, two biolax circuit boards and 900 for injector, an injector pump. 750 for the pump station, 5,200 for the lab, 1,200 of that is for new probes, 750 for tools and 1,000 for general, which includes about 500 for special batteries.
Line item for chemicals, 6150. Last year, the amount was 53,500. This year, it's slightly up to 54,100 and that gives you your breakdown there on the slide. And also repairs and maintenance count 6200. Last year, the amount of budgeted was 36,100. This year, it's 38,750. And you can see the various items that make up repairs and maintenance.
In your, the 25,000 for your wastewater plant, just real quickly, 1,500 for a new power supply, 750 for UV deck, 800 for a valve blower, about 2,000 for mechanical seals and 20,000 is base. We budgeted about 7,000 for the pump station, 1,000 to pump out the wet well, 1,100 to rebuild the shaft, 500 for lagoons, 2,500 for your lines. Then you have your lab contingency in general.
So total expenses are 735,613. The net fund income for Fund Five, the sewer fund, is a, is a positive 324,637. That's represented here on the final slide. Revenues outpacing expenses for fiscal year 20 budget.
Just a couple of the, just like we did with the water, for sewer, for some future infrastructure projects. We want to continue with the sewer relining. The two main areas that staff would like to concentrate in fiscal year 2020 will be the relining of Irish Town Road to Creekside Drive as well as the post office to Mother Seton. Priority wise, the post office to Mother Seton is most important. The lab at the wastewater treatment plant needs a new generator. The filter facility needs a new compressor. The East Main Street manhole, they've estimated high at 180,000. We're not sure. And then obviously, the Creamery Road pump station, whatever the towns match is going to have to be to complete that project. That obviously is our priority project for 2020. If we receive the MDE funding, we have to break ground no later than December of 2020.
Are there any questions concerning Fund Five Sewer Fund?
Any question?
I know we talked about this before. Just remind me again, the very first line item there, Irish Town Road to Creekside Drive. Is it approximately just like a straight line from Creekside over to where the, where the back parking lot of Elias Lutheran Church is at? Or is it more diagonal?
I don't know which way the line runs. I, I can't imagine all our lines run straight anymore. I, I don't know. I don't know, that's a prox, it's the approximate answer. Unfortunately, you know, all those lines were put in for so long, we can only go off what we believe where they are. But I think that's the direction, I think that's.
Um, just the area of town that would be affected. It's, it's not like it was, like, you know, East Main Street being kind of tied up a little bit. I just wanted to do.
No, obviously, you've got less traffic. You have less, you know, the, it's a lot, the linear feet is smaller than Main Street. You probably have less connections for the company to have to worry about. So I think the, the impact on town will be far less than the Main Street program.
And then I can't remember though, when they're in the process of doing the relining, is there any, are there potentially any adverse effects that could occur to the sewer lines and?
We didn't have any problems and we didn't have any real complaints from anybody when they were doing the Main Street line.
We were really communicative with the.
Right, which we will, you know, and there's, you know, with each project that we do, we, you know, we reevaluate pros and cons. They knocked on doors, they put up flyers. The notice could have been a little bit better from my understanding. There was some miscommunication. The company said they were going to do it, so staff thought they did it, they didn't do it. So, you know, lesson learned. But as far as any interruption in service, I think it was minimal. And people lost of service. I think one complaint was there's possibly an odor for a small period of time. But other than that, I can't remember of any problems that we did have with the project. The, what's good about the post office, some other Seton, that runs through the, the park and the creek and stream area. So there's just a few connections that we have to worry about. So that one should go very smoothly with very minimal impact.
I just have one more question. This was related to revenue for sewer, miscellaneous revenue. There's a $3,000 increase.
The sewer?
Yes, so 4,500 for miscellaneous, account number for miscellaneous revenue for sewer.
Right, that, that, that increase is, the $3,000 increase is directly tied to, it's a, an administrative fee that we get to take back as a town when we submit our bay restoration submissions. We get a credit for some administrative costs. That reduces the amount we send to the state of Maryland when we, as we fill out the, the form. So those, that's just being recognized there. And also, the 80, 80,000 of the 83 is the rental on the lagoon.
Lagoon, yeah.
So that's the slight difference there.
I was wondering, because I didn't think that something changed. I remember it was around 80, so.
Right, during last year's audit, we, we took, we caught up with that entry to take, to recognize that revenue for that particular item.
Thank you. I'm finished.
All right, any other questions? Nope, all right, cool.
Couple of other items that we just want to quickly go through. One is the, we want to pull out the electric budget totals for, across the board for the town. And as you can see, the, for fiscal year 18 through fiscal year 20, the electric budget has been roughly the same each year. Fiscal year 18, the budget was 165,700. Fiscal year 19, it was increased up to 172,950. And in this current year, we actually have it slightly lower at 172,600. But those are the different departments that we code electric expenses to. And it's just a, a slide to give you a visual representation of where the budgets have been. We plan, as far as the numbers are looking this year, we will be at budget or below budget for the current fiscal year. So we, we believe that will be consistent with next year. This is a, a slide that details the total energy costs that we had that have been audited through fiscal year 18. And you can see the past several years. On the left-hand side, you have the fiscal year. And then you have columns A, B and C, which make up the total energy expense for the town. The numbers in the totals column make up the audited numbers through fiscal year 18. So if you look at fiscal year 17, fiscal year 18, we're right around 160, 165,000. Fiscal year 19, as far as actuals, fiscal year 19 halfway through the year, we're at about 81,000. So we should come around to about 160, 160,000 for the fiscal year this current year. One thing to emphasize on this slide is the past couple of years were actually lower than what we were at fiscal year 10, which is several years ago. So we're happy to see those numbers compared to that. And that's with having a new, as you know, a new facility for the wastewater treatment plant. Here's another slide that has the town energy expenses. You can see that the last couple of years, it's been consistent right around that 160, 165,000 amount. Another line item we wanted to just briefly go over is the insurance across, across the board for the town. The fiscal year 20 insurance budgeted amount is 32,250. That compares to last year at 31,700. So we just, it seems like all insurances kind of go up year to year by small amounts. Is, is there any, on those particular slides, was there any questions concerning that, concerning those? Okay, I'll let Kathy talk about the projects.
What we wanted to do is just kind of highlight some of the projects we completed in FY 2019 through the budget that you passed for this fiscal year. We completed the wayside exhibits. They're going to be installed fairly soon. The ribbon cutting is, is on community day. Staff is going to have those installed in time for community day. You passed, in the budget, you allowed us to buy mobile radios for all our vehicles, which was very helpful for staff and it's also a safety, it was a safety concern of mine. We completed the Emmett Garden totlot. We installed, we had installed the four electric vehicle charging stations. We have seen use, we've seen a couple of vehicles there at, at any given time, which is nice to see. We just got to get the word out in the app. We completed the phase two of the riprap of the lake. The town cameras, we installed at various locations in the park, the pool, East and West Main Street. The sewer relining project on East Main Street. The ongoing community legacy program. That's just two examples of the most recently completed projects.
Looks good.
As the mayor said, we've done, what, 882,000 of work through this program. We received Tree City USA certification. The new visitor kiosk should be installed soon, if it hasn't been installed already. We terminated the 8-inch mountain, well, we're just about finished terminating the 8-inch mountain water line. The square revitalization project. Some of the town events that we were able to hold because of the budget that was passed. We did our own national night out with some assistance from the sheriff's office this year. As I said, this will be the countywide national night out, so it should be very well attended. Our farmer's market, Christmas tea decorating. We had three pool parties, the Arbor Day celebration, park concerts. An example, staff, a lot of this work couldn't be done without staff and without staff's dedication to pursuing grants. I can't speak enough about Ms. Shaw's ability to write these grants. She does a phenomenal job. Zack's coming along with his grants, so I anticipate even more wins in the win column for us and grants in FY 2020. We received 7,500 from MHAA for the waysides. Thanks to Dan and his staff, our nutrient levels for phosphorus remain low. So we were able to receive 30,000 in monies from MDE. POS program, Open Space, gave us money for the pool parking lot paving, which I think looks really good. The pool house rehabilitation and the all-inclusive playground. Community Legacy or the Department Housing Community Development gave us 75,000 towards the all-inclusive playground. And as we mentioned earlier, the money for the storm drain marking, the kiosk panel and the park recycling bins. Again, here's some more, the Creamery Road sidewalks. Has anybody been out on Creamery Road to see the sidewalk? It looks, they did excellent work. The, the bank looks wonderful. We received the money for the disc golf course. And then we have two grants pending through AARP for the pool. We have a grant pending for the second round of the wayside exhibits. The tennis court resurfacing, community park playground, or paving, community garden rehab, memorial park bleachers and our initial 30,000 grant through USDA for the pump station. These are all pending, waiting our, our award letters. And then that concludes staff's presentation. I see Commissioner Blanchard, I had one question we didn't go over. Page eight, line item 6902. And that was donations.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
In Department 10. Basically, what makes up that is mostly donations to Cattockton High School for either their safe and sane or their athletic boosters. We have done the hardest civil war. It's basically some of the smaller things that we get asked for that makes up that line item.
Cool, thanks. All right, thanks for your presentation. Commissioner Sweeney, of course, is not here tonight. He did contact Ms. Willis and said that he did not have any questions or comments on this, just to let everybody know as far as that's concerned. My questions or comments have been answered. Has anyone on the board, have any additional questions or comments? The Bush.
I do actually, not for staff though, actually for the mayor. Mr. Mayor, there's a recommendation for salary increases here for town staff. Could you comment on that?
Sure, thank you. It's, it's, we haven't had a COLA in, I think, three years, is that correct?
We did not have a COLA last year.
Last year and. Last year, and, and we went over some figures on the average, national average, and it was time. They've had the in-step raises, but just, you know, it's getting very, it's a very competitive labor pool right now.
Yeah.
And we want to keep the people we're training and educating. And I want to just show the confidence. We've talked about our town clerk, Ms. Shaw, and how Zach is coming along, and our town manager. Everybody is performing very well. And I, I, I think it's, we didn't do it last year. It's time to give them a COLA right now. And it's not, I don't have the exact percentage. What is it, COLA two?
If, if the, if the COLA and step are improved, it's only a one point three five percent increase in the overall, from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty in the salaries.
Right. We want to keep everybody home on here. And it's, it's well-deserved. I mean, it's phenomenal production, what they've done and carried out every, everything we could possibly ask them to do and more. And, amen.
Thank you, sir.
Just one comment on my part. This is the budget that, of course, starts on July one, correct, FY twenty twenty? And I know it's in our purview to obviously wait till June if we would like to. However, since I've heard from Commissioner Sweeney that he had no comments or questions, and I think we've done a pretty thorough look at this, of course, it's a will of the board. What is the will of the board is concerning the budget. Would you like to consider it tonight, or would you like to look at it in June?
I have one question regarding that. I know on the agenda this evening, we are looking at the salary chart.
That's item number three, uh, four, I'm sorry.
I can't remember. Does the salary chart need to be approved at the same time as the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
They go hand in hand, because if you don't approve the salary chart, then the budget changes, because then all the line items in each department then will change. But in, as part of this budget, as you'll see in line, agenda item number four, five, is also the.
The tax rate.
Setting the tax rate.
Okay.
So, they all go hand to hand.
That's what I thought.
Tax rate, salary.
Tax rate, salary chart, and then the budget. I guess my only reservation is if we go through the salary chart portion, and there are some questions, there might be, you know, we've only had this a couple of days. I know you'll explain things to us this evening, but let's say something does change. That's my only reservation.
Last.
In accepting the budget this evening.
That's what I was asking.
Well, last year, you approved the budget at the second meeting in May.
Okay.
Just, so you have done it before. I'm not saying that you have to do it. I'm just saying it has been done before. If there are questions about the salary chart, we'd like to address them sooner tonight. We do have where everybody sits, grade step. I will tell you that this, the evaluations, all evaluations were completed in March twenty nineteen. Everybody met the requirements to be eligible for their step increase, which basically takes you from, if you're, say, a grade eight, step two, it'll move you up to a grade eight, step three. The percentage increase depend, is different for everybody, depending on where they fall in your salary chart. And you, if you're going to approve a step, you have to approve it for everybody. You can't spot, you know, say this person did, but you can't get it. Or position, not particularly person.
And I believe, yeah, last year, we had two meetings in May.
You had your first meeting, yeah, you had May one, and then May fifteenth. That's why we had your first meeting, we had the first budget meeting, April fifteenth.
Okay.
This is your second budget meeting.
Second meeting, yeah.
Okay, that's all I was.
Okay.
Throwing out there.
What is the will of the board tonight? What'd you guys like to do?
I would be comfortable if we were to approve the tax rate, give consideration to and approve the salary.
Mm-hmm.
Based on the recommendation from the mayor, should there be no questions that change that. And give, give the opportunity for the vote on the budget.
Okay.
And that, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Given Mr. Sweeney's comments, I think he's content with what was presented.
Mm-hmm.
As he, as he said, he had no questions. Kind of reading between the lines on his.
Yeah, I mean, this is obviously an important item. I want to make sure, obviously, Commissioner Sweeney had a chance to get some input, but.
I mean, I, I don't feel terribly unusual that, well, though he is not here, I think he's weighed in.
Exactly, exactly.
I don't want to usurp anything from the president.
Okay, all right. That being the case, do we have a motion concerning the fiscal year FY twenty twenty budget?
Do we want to do the tax rate first, then the budget? Sorry.
Ideally, I should have set the agenda.
Okay, do it the other way.
So, what we probably need to do is just postpone the vote on, tentatively postpone the vote on agenda item number three.
Okay.
You can move to the tax rate, then move to the salary chart, move back to the budget. Ideally, I should have set it in that correct order.
Okay, okay, I got it. So, all right, so we're going to move on actually to agenda item number four right now, the fiscal year twenty twenty, no, I'm sorry, budget item five, setting of the tax rate for the fiscal year twenty twenty for consideration.
I make a motion to set the fiscal year twenty twenty tax rate to remain the same as twenty nineteen at thirty-six cents per one hundred.
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner O'Donnell and seconded by Commissioner Ritz concerning the tax rate. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes four to zero. Commissioner Sweeney absent. All right, so then we're going to move backwards. And should we do the budget first and then the salary chart, or?
I would do the salary chart.
Salary chart, okay, salary chart, okay, I'm sorry. All right, so we're going to go look at agenda item number four, the salary chart adoption for consideration.
I'm going to make a recommendation first, sir.
That's true.
Staff, fear not. I'm looking at page twenty-seven of twenty-nine. Though flattered to be remembered as the president, I sit as a treasurer now, so if we could modify that to show Mr. Sweeney as the president of the board.
Yes. Ms. Shaw said it's on the official one to be signed, yes.
Okay.
But I am flattered. So, with that in mind, may I make a motion, sir?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the, let me get the right name, I'm sorry.
Twenty twenty salary chart.
The fiscal year twenty twenty, gosh.
Page twenty-two.
I make a motion to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty salary chart as presented by staff.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion made by Commissioner O'Donnell and seconded by Commissioner Buckman. Any further discussion?
Is.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
By, by adopting this, are we automatically including the recommendation for the two percent COLA as recommended by the mayor?
Yes.
Do we have to specify that?
If you adopt this chart, it is included in the chart. So, you can specify it or not. The only thing I might add, if you'll add to your motion, is reference ordinance number nineteen oh six.
Okay.
Because the salary chart has to be adopted by ordinance.
So, I'll modify my motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty salary chart with ordinance number nineteen dash zero six.
And I'll second that.
All right, motion made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Buckman. Any further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Commissioner Sweeney absent. Now, we move on to the budget. So, we're moving backwards to agenda item number three, the fiscal year twenty twenty budget.
I'll make a motion to accept fiscal year twenty twenty budget, ordinance nineteen dash zero five as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second, Commissioner O'Donnell. All right, motion made by Commissioner Buckman and seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. Any further discussion?
Yes, just a clarification, one item.
Sure.
The total sum for the budget will be one million, one hundred thousand. I'm looking for the final total.
Do you have it handy?
Who's got it on the?
The total budget for the general fund is a million, nine thirty, two thirty-two. And then Fund Two, the transfer amount. The transfer amount for Fund Two Capital Projects Fund is two hundred forty-eight thousand, one seventy-one. For Fund Four, the Water Fund, the total expenses in the budget is five hundred eighty-three thousand, nine ten. And then for Fund Five, the Sewer Fund, the total expenses listed is seven hundred thirty-five thousand, six thirteen.
Did I answer your questions, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, for intense and purposes, yes.
Okay. Again, we have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Buckman, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. Any further discussion now?
No, sir.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Commissioner Sweeney absent.
Thank you. I want to just give a shout out to staff. We begin meeting in February. We have department head meetings, staff meetings. Staff put a lot of time in developing this budget. A lot of hard work was done. And I know myself and Cole, we couldn't have done it without our staff. So, I just wanted to say thank you. And, and the mayor was very helpful in reviewing the budget and giving his input as well. And I thank you for passing the budget.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate your response, also my questions I had. Just, you know, I just feel like it kind of works a little smoother if I can sort of think myself through it for a couple of weeks and go, all right, get it in my head, and then come forward to the meeting itself. All right, moving on to setting the agenda for the next meeting, June third, two thousand nineteen.
I actually have just two items for June third, twenty nineteen. First item is going to be approval of the twenty twenty community legacy resolution in support of the facade grant for consideration.
Okay, I think I got that.
And the final item, and the third, or second item, excuse me, will be final staff presentation on the proposed sign ordinance. It's a discussion-only item.
Okay.
And it'll be the final presentation.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
We're good.
Okay, fantastic. Commissioners? Commissioner O'Donnell?
No, sir, nothing.
Commissioner Ritz?
I have a request for consent agenda item.
Consent agenda, okay. What do you got for consent?
Two individuals for continuation, actually, they lapsed, but on Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Renewing their terms?
Yes.
Okay.
They are interested in renewing their terms and potential new member or new members.
Right.
Do you know their names, or you want to email?
I will email those to you.
Okay.
And that's, that's contingent upon possible removal of members that are no longer interested.
Okay.
Have their terms expired, the ones?
No.
Okay, so that has to come.
They are in violation of attendance, but, but I don't think that they just have the time or means to attend.
Right, okay. So, during that line item, or that agenda item, we'll need all, if you'll send me all that information, we'll put it together for you.
Yes. Now, when's the last, give me, give me a deadline. It'll help me better if you give me a deadline.
June, May, May. May, when do you need it? By the Wednesday, Maddie, before the meeting?
Yeah.
May twenty-ninth is the day she'll need to know by.
Okay.
Commissioner Ritz, you good with that?
That's, that's ample time, thank you.
Commissioner Buckman?
Well, last meeting that we had, I, I know, I'm really happy with our green team. I'm not complaining. I want the whole town to go solar. I was so disappointed at the fact that we couldn't tie other big businesses into our solar field. And I don't understand why Potomac Edison wouldn't want that. But I was just wondering, since I wasn't on the board at the time, if we could look at that contract again, maybe as a group. I would like a copy of it.
The, and you correct me, because it was just as I was starting here. I don't know that there's a contract with PE related to the community array, where they, they said we will add community organizations. The agreements that we have are with Standard Solar, and this is just, I'd have to go back and read it. The agreements we have are with Standard Solar, was the installation and construction of the solar fields, and then a retail purchasing agreement with UGI, which is the purchasing of electric, or solar from UGI.
Well, I was just wondering if we could look at that, because if we can't tie the whole town in it, I don't think it's going to be profitable. And if there's a way that we could revamp that contract so that it is actually, we can all join in and become a much more green town. Could we save money by breaking that contract and renegotiating a contract?
It's not a contract that we have. We don't have one with Potomac Edison.
Well, who's limiting us?
Potomac Edison.
Potomac Edison.
Well, then, we don't have a contract with them, but they're limiting us.
On what authority are they limiting us? That's the question.
Because it's not in there. And Cole, Cole does most of the work on solar. And we can, we can give a short presentation on it. But Potomac Edison is the one who basically says you can add accounts or you can't add accounts.
Why would they want to limit that?
So, I can go to Potomac Edison and add my house.
Can we invite someone from Potomac Edison? Because I really want to know why would they want to limit us? Because the, the profit they would make from having more people on there would be.
But they're not.
No, we understand that, no.
They're not making the money off of us.
We understand that. But I, I think, if I understand what you're asking for is, by having a representative from the company, they can hear our concern. And I, I think ours is a very real one. It just strikes me that, you know, we're.
Let's talk about.
The, the way that we entered the agreement as a board at that point in time was, we had an understanding that we could add to it. And I know you're not defending their position, but I want to just say is we're trying to defend our position. And I, I'm sure that they have their agenda and we have our agenda. But we would like to maybe have that conversation in a public forum, a town meeting, and invite a representative of that company here, so we can investigate how we can better, better utilize solar.
It's smart and it's green, and it would benefit everybody in this country to stand up for what's right.
The way it was presented, we, we asked if we could get our volunteer groups, the ambulance company and the fire company on. The ambulance company was experiencing some, you know, coming in for landing.
Sure, right.
And we didn't put them on because of that. And this is strictly for our accounts. Now, we went back and met with them, and they rejected us adding the ambulance company onto our account folder. They weren't prepared to work with us in solar, first energy. They just didn't have the experience. They didn't, and there were only two, two towns that were going at this, Poolsville and us, in our, our thing. And, and we were headed Poolsville, but we're kind of up. And, and we're very fortunate, we got Vigilant Hoes on there. And we went back to say, can we add our neck other volunteer group, because we're saving money? And they said no. And our, our agreement is with a power company out of Pennsylvania. That's the, the UGI thing. And they, they were the ones that were ready to do solar and experience there. But, but we're in a first energy area, and they don't want to turn loose another account. And we've asked them about, can we go to community, can we go to community? There was asked, and, and it was on the horizon, but it's, 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 you know, we haven't heard back. We, we just checked with these.
Are we able to push that?
We just, we just checked back with them. They wouldn't let the ambulance come on. That's the first target.
With that, with that being said, I mean, we do have capacity to sell, but we don't want to sell all our capacity, because the wastewater treatment plant's going to continue to grow.
Right.
With our future development. So, as far as using all, using the whole capacity up, we don't want to do that, because then that will eliminate, limit the town's use on the plant as that continues to grow. But we'll have, staff will have to look into see where we even start that conversation, because we, the level we've started at, we keep being told no. So.
We only have so many accounts we can get on there and up. It's called virtual aggregation, or we, they report waterfall account, how many we can put on there. But we really plan to have at least one more to take care of our, our volunteer groups. And it was, it was a very, it was not a nice meeting we had with them, the way they treated us.
I, I, I'm sorry. I understand what Commissioner Buckman's asking. I, I think that's a really good question. But perhaps, like you just explained, the, what's the term you used, that the, something. the term you used that the, something ag-
Virtual aggregation.
If, if like, if there could be a, you know, the investigation into this and maybe even a presentation is to, to explain to us and then therefore the community, um, why they can't. And I don't want to use the term dumbed-down version, but like, in terms that we can all understand as to why. Because, you know, like if, if I want to put solar, if I want to convert my house to solar, there's nothing stopping me.
Mm-hmm.
But what's, what's preventing anyone from tapping into what the town has?
Right. We, we.
We just don't understand.
We gladly share it.
Okay.
Where we're, this is, uh.
I know there's some communities out west that have like a co-op where you can.
Yeah, there are co-ops. There are co-ops and, uh.
We actually looked into a co-op through Frederick County and we weren't eligible at the time. That was.
So, Mr. Mayor, I.
We're open to everything. Let's, 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 let's.
I go back to the original request, though, and, you know, I appreciate the executive hearing that from them firsthand. I would like for the legislature to hear that from them firsthand.
Sure.
And, and invite them in. So if they want to say no, so be it. But I, I'd like it in front of the board, you know, because I think there, there's value in having this conversation because maybe this will open the doors, set the stage for better things.
So if I understand correctly, what we could have is a discussion slash presentation on the solar fields is what we're looking for?
I would like to have a represent, a representative of whomever it is saying that we're limited in what we can do.
Okay.
And, and understand and have an explanation as to why we're limited.
Okay.
You know, and, and if, if that's the nature of it, so be it. But we would like clarification because it seems to me that it, it feels arbitrary. It might not be.
It did feel arbitrary. But, but we were, we were sitting in a room, uh, Mr. Haller, uh, Jerry Muir and myself and over in some place in Washington County that, uh, we met a facility there with about eight of their engineers and, and we were told no. But, uh, I, I'd like you to hear it too. And I, we, we definitely want to share, you know, this is, climate change is very topical and, uh, and we'd love to get everybody on and, and to benefit from savings in solar. It's, it's the right thing to do, use renewable energy. Uh, the, one of the things, the value of what we have now, our town is not competing to drive the price up of electricity for our, our residents. It's maybe only mid school what we've taken off, but we're, we've taken a step in the right direction. We're not competing to drive the price up for our residents. And, uh, like, you'll want, can you give us like to July?
Sure.
Then we'll get back to you in June.
Is that reasonable?
In June to see if we can pull this off and, and what we can do.
No, yeah, no, that's fine.
I'd love for you to hear because I'd love to get it.
I want the conversation started and you are known as being the trailblazer for this. And I think that we can continue to be the trailblazer to make it more negotiable for other communities.
Absolutely.
And so I would like to keep squeaking the wheel.
Well, I'd like to push them again, too. And it's, uh, you know, it's, uh, we were very chagrined when we came out of that meeting.
I'm sure.
But, um, well, let's, let's see if we can get something for July and, and, uh, we'll give you an update by June. Is that okay with you gentlemen?
Is that okay, Commissioner Buckman? All right, so that being the case, any other items? All right, basically, we're looking at one consent item then, consent agenda item, uh, from, uh, Commissioner Ritz concerning the Parks and Rec, uh, possible term limits on people and expanding the people that are on the lists?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so that's consent agenda. Then we just had the two items that you brought up, Kathy. Uh, the approval of the resolution concerning the, I read my writing here, sorry. Help me out again, sorry.
Approval of the twenty twenty, uh, uh, Community Legacy Resolution in support of facade grants.
That's it, sorry. Support of facade grants, my fault. And the second item you had was the bringing back the presentation concerning the sign ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have consent from our board concerning these three items?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner O'Donnell.
Sorry, Mr., may I modify that?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the agenda proposed for the June third town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I second.
All right, we seconded by Commissioner Ritz. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Commissioner Sweeney absent. Any last comments?
Yes, sir. Super quick.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you to staff for your efforts. It is appreciated. Uh, Commissioner Buckman, uh, I owe you an apology and I want to thank you for getting that Alice report presented to town. And for the life of me, I tried to be there for the whole thing and.
You looked a little green.
I felt horrible. And so I, I, I did have to depart early, but thank you for getting that. I know that's something you've worked very diligently to do. My hat's off to you for getting them here and presenting.
It's been YouTube, so if you.
Oh, very good. Okay, good. I'll, I'll check that out. Thank you, though.
Any other comments? I just want to make one last one. Congratulations to Commissioner O'Donnell, having two individuals graduate this year, one from high school and one from college.
Thank you, sir.
And congratulations to Commissioner Buckman, having an individual graduate from high school. Any other comments?
I've got grandson graduating.
A grandson graduating? Oh, good. All right, well, good for him.
A granddaughter.
I have one thing to say.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Nice job this evening.
Oh, thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Uh, meeting comes to a close at ten seventeen.
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
All right, here we go. Motion made and seconded, and the meeting comes to a close at ten seventeen.